941 gravel road special use permit slash major home occupation review. Located at 941 gravel road, the town of Webster's board of tenants is requesting a review of the special use permit under good conditions to conduct a major home occupation associated with landscaping and excavation business in a 2.09 acre parcel having SBR number 078.16-1-1.1, located in our three single family residential district, under section 350-103F of the code of the town of Webster.
Hi, my name is Devin Fior. I'm good friends with Bill and Timmy. I'm here assisting them with the meeting.
Hey folks.
How's it going?
Good.
Great. Hey, Andy. So, would you like me to give you like a brief history of the property and the special use permit in the late '00s?
The code for sponsor has a presentation. Eric, did you ask the question correctly? I haven't suggested the code for sponsor to give the presentation and like you had an opportunity to.
Sure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board and those attendants. My name is Jim MacRae. I am the code for line supporter for the town. And during the work, the violations that have been on the property have strictly involved the special use permit that's spread by this government. Those violations include 350.4C parked vehicles, 350.4D parked vehicles, 201, 3B, 08, 269, 24 operation outside of special use permit conditions, 350, 37A2G display of goods and materials. To start, if you're looking at the picture on the left side of the screen, this is a violation of 350.4C parked vehicles, no commercial vehicle having overall length excessive or any semi tractor trailer or semi trailer of any length should be parked on any other type of property in the residential district unless in further intention or any commercial or construction to sell or deliver such property. This next slide shows my property, the 250 attached to a commercial trailer, which is a violation of 350.44D parked commercial vehicles, a commercial vehicle which is not a semi tractor trailer or semi trailer or construction vehicle having any overall length or feet or less may be parked outside of the property, in and residential district subject to the following conditions: any one such vehicle may be parked and you will not continue to do anything for the resident vehicle owner or operator. Such vehicles shall be parked on the driveway or in garage. This vehicle is overturned by a current law. Next, we're going to go over dumping. As you can see in the image to the right, a dump truck dumping out the property. Our public permit is an issue of helping services of filling or established graves should be done unless the owner of the property to be built shall be issued with a permit therefore by the town board as herein provided. So this is over the special use permit that was granted again by this board. These are the conditions that were provided in 2011. I can go over each one of them. Advocate must obtain all necessary government permits and community town board permit. Number two is condition of construction must appear in part of June 12th, so 12. The applicant must return before the zoning board in six months to show compliance and conditions. Number four, the applicant must meet the requirements of 225, 37A2, which I know that this code section has been changed over the years. Will be met by the applicant to eliminate outside storage, parking, commercial vehicles, which includes the bobcat and chipper for construction of barn. Two employees who are not residing on the premises, which is not formally permitted. Those two employees will be allowed to comply with the condition that they do not actually work on the premises, which is clear of vehicles. Number six says the full time employees will not perform maintenance of equipment on the premises. Number seven, the applicant will comply with the call of 225, 37A2, again, which the town code has changed to the town code, plain work of a woman. So now we're going to go over the violations that I have observed on the property. This is a violation of condition number four, which states that the applicant must meet the requirements of 225, 37A2, A and G. Matt, that again, says that specifically the bobcat cannot be on the premises nor working on their commercial equipment. So on the right, you can see clearly there's a bobcat in property and on the left, you can see a vacuum and a dump truck. This next is a video showing two employees who are, or two people who are actively shoveling materials into a truck. They actively shovel into the truck for the last minute and a half.
That is a commercial vehicle.
Seven.
B, 24.
It is a commercial vehicle, yes.
Thank you.
350, 37B2 is displayed, goods and materials. This is not, this is a general condition, not a specific condition that the board set, but this is a general condition in our town code. Says there's shown no exterior display of storage, goods, materials, equipment, inventory. As you can see clearly, there are all those which are provided. Again, furthering, you can see the materials shown in the picture, circle in red. And then the equipment shown and then materials as well. There's bags of concrete and then a large pile of gravel. And again, just want to everyone, these attendants today and those who are watching the board to know that this board has the power to replicate this special use permit by reading two paragraphs and those such details that this, that is the power this board has.
Thank you. Could I ask a question then?
Sorry, what was that?
Could I ask a question?
You can ask the question.
Sure. Which newspaper was announced published in ten days prior?
Webster Herald.
Webster Herald, okay. Okay, so can I address the complaints?
Yes.
Okay. The two main complaints and Jim can tell me if I'm incorrect is one, the outside storage of equipment, which is supposed to be undercover.
Are you asking a question?
Yes.
Yes, the materials and equipment permit is supposed to be.
Undercover.
Within the building.
Right, okay, okay. So whatever, I mean, Tim has addressed, every time there was a complaint, he adjusted. He's never been to court because he refused to put his equipment undercover or remove any storage materials.
So are you saying that we need to, we need to bring, bring that to Tim? I mean, Tim's just complying with this.
Well, I have one question because when the permit was granted for us, storage of equipment is to be done at night. This is very professional. I mean, all my equipment's been stored in the barn at night. I mean.
That's not part of the, yeah, from what I recall reading, that's not what the conditions, the conditions of it was to store it in the barn at night. It was to be stored in the barn.
So when I come back to eat lunch or something, it needs to be parked in the barn? I didn't realize that. That's my.
All right, I'll talk about that. So the only point that I'm making is that all of the citations or complaints have to do with either dirt, stone, or his equipment not being in a building.
I think I saw pictures of concrete, mortar and.
It's.
Iiding and other components as well.
The concrete bag that I bought sat there because I was redoing the fence. I didn't have a permit for it, but I was told that the one neighbor was gonna put up another fence, so I stopped progress of reinstalling fence. So that's what the concrete was there.
Yeah, I mean, it's still, it's still a residence.
Yep.
Okay, so if he has 10 days of concrete, it doesn't automatically dictate that it's for his business. It could be for his residential use, okay? I'm making a claim one way or the other. I reside, okay? But my point is that, that every time he's been cited, he's been more than cooperative and immediately addressed the situation, which is why he's never ended up in court. Am I?
That's incorrect. He hasn't been in court.
No, he was adhered to.
You still weren't in court. You sure. But you were, you were issued an appearance ticket.
Okay, okay. He's been issued an appearance ticket and when he went to court, it was adjourned.
It was adjourned, yes.
It was adjourned. Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm staying, I'm staying correct. Also, the stone, Jim, I thought you said, stone was fine on the property.
I said that you were going to be using it immediately to renew your area, your previous service.
Yeah.
But it's not staying there for years.
You said the stone was fine, so is that fine? Being used now or grading now?
When was it being used?
I got trees coming down. We're meeting Mr. Stevens' request, the 2-1 slope through the property line.
So is it being used now or is it?
Trees are coming down tomorrow. So once they're down, yes.
It's been too long. We have a guy at Good Mother and everybody else. It's been too long. Take the extra and we're making this.
Questions or comments from the board? The elements are looking up to public. Do I want to speak for or against this property then?
I can speak for.
Can I speak? Any of you address?
Yes. Sandra, 937 gravel road. So we're the neighbors right next door. We have no issues.
Thank you. You said 937? Okay.
937.
Thank you.
Hey, we'll speak, we'll speak. Joe Beeler, burglar or major general, National Guard, live right next door. No issues. There's none of the problem at all with that property. No noise issues. It's, don't see any curbside issues of appeal. I support them continuing what they're doing.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
What address?
955 gravel road, right on the property.
Judge number 951 gravel road. In the images that were taken, Mr. Best's backyard on the greenhouse that you can see physically in the backyard there, I have direct line of sight in that area. As far as my concerns, Tim has been good about taking care of the general area. I have been there since 2013 and have had no issue with him working back there. His time that he spent caring for that yard, he's done what he can obviously to maintain his business and also maintain the view that we have of his property, even going so far as to invest in building the property line, the berm that's on our side, obviously, putting in the arboretries in there in order to help with the visibility on that side. I believe that he's done his part to work well as a good neighbor and this woman. I'm in support of him.
My name is John Berry. I live at 949 gravel road. I've been a resident of Webster for 39 plus years. And I have known the Besters for 20 plus years as my neighbor. I saw them when they moved in before they had kids. I recognized that he was a young married couple. They were a young married couple, very hardworking. I would see him leave in the morning and not get back until dark, around the clock, seven days a week. I know he's had a few different opportunities to work in other fields. I happened to bring him to my place of employment to try to get a job when he was in between jobs. I know he worked for Mr. Fior. And I know he struggled for a good many years as a self-employed businessman. And I'm happy to see that he has improved his business. And I don't find a problem with him having a business. And I look right at his yard. I look at his barn. It's a well-kept piece of property. He has, as Jonathan said, put berms with arboretries up to hide some of the businesses that he has. I know he's complied with other town issues by building a shed behind his barn at a pretty good cost of money. And I can tell you from the years that I've known him, if there's anything that I asked him to do, he would do it. He plows our road. Sometimes we don't even see a contract. We pay him. He doesn't even come looking for the money. We pay him as he does our driveways and our private road. I've noticed through the years of being his neighbor that he's been associated with canine orphans at a foster home, taking dogs in, two of which are now his personal dogs. I know that he's had a relative move in with him that he's taken care of. And I know there's people that have come here tonight to support him, are doing that because he's been good to them as a neighbor and has helped them as well as he's helped me. So I couldn't ask for a better neighbor. I'm 73 years old. I've had a lot of neighbors. And I would say that this is probably one of the best neighbors I've had and a nice family.
Hi, my name is Alex Lulung and this is my husband, Nathan Core. We live at 541
Elbow Circle. So unfortunately, we've had a different experience. We are on the opposite side of the property as the greenhouse in the back. So I've included some photos. We moved in in, what, September 2021? So I've included some photos throughout the years. I don't know if you can zoom in on that photo, but it shows two recreational trailers, a dump truck, another dump truck to the side with it, it's fed up. And there's also a truck in the back. And that was stored during winter time behind our fence. So the problem most used for us used to only really be in the winter time as far as being able to like physically see it. So I included another photo. So that's what it used to look like in the summertime. That is in August of 2023. So there were some trees that would fill in. Unfortunately, that tree coverage has changed. If you go to the next photo. So that is in November of 2023. So a lot of the trees were cleared. And unfortunately, there were three different trailers, or four different trailers that were stored in that big open area. And then you can see the dump truck sitting out there as well. So to my knowledge, I believe the neighbor was notified that they couldn't store recreational vehicles back in October by Jim. Apparently you confirmed that that is correct.
I came for the date, but yes.
Okay, yeah. So that's in November. You go to the next picture. That's later, in November, showing like three different trucks parked back there. If you zoom in, you can also see the trailer with the equipment on it. If you go to the next picture, this is in December. The recreational trailers are still there. You can see more equipment outside. I will note, I'm not sure of the duration that the equipment is staying there. But it is, this isn't an every single day occurrence where there's equipment out there, but there are times when there is equipment out there. So this happens to be one of them. If you go to the next photo, that is in February. Recreational trailers still haven't moved. You also see two trucks, one truck with a trailer attached to it. And then if you go to the next photo, this is in March, and you still see recreational trailers. So unfortunately, I, unfortunately, if, you know, he was notified back in fall and then these recreational trailers sat there for almost six months. I'm not really seeing that as a timely solution. And I think the biggest thing for us, like I said, this is our backyard view. This is the view from my office. This is the view from our kitchen. This is the view of our backyard. So unfortunately, we just have a different perspective than the other neighbors.
Yeah, the way our house is set up, we spend 99% of our time in the back looking out for this.
Yeah. So the other thing too, as far as our understanding from the original special use is that the property needed to be maintained. I understand this other neighbor's experience where it has been. Unfortunately for us, we are looking at something that hasn't been maintained. That stone pile, for example, has been sitting out there at least for two years, if not longer. Like I said, we moved in in 2021. We are just looking for some sort of solution to be able to enjoy where we live, I guess. So we were here last month for an application for a 10-foot fence to try to block some of this. Our property is significantly lower than our neighbor's property. So that's why we asked for the 10-foot. It's still not going to be able to block everything. That was really the only thing we thought to do in our power. We got a quote for that fence. It was close to $11,000. So that's an expense that we don't want to do, but it might be something that we have to do if, you know, this is going to occur. That, if you want.
Yeah, just based on reading the original agenda, reading from the special use permit, just based on the kind of variance that are required to use this property in a different condition, it's obvious that it's going to be different for business to endure of a gender.
Yeah. And I also think too, one of our concerns is, you know, what happens, I guess, after however you guys vote, how is this over? Like, how is it going to be enforced? Because I think the biggest question for us is, it hasn't been enforced and there have been considerate violations of it. And we appreciate you guys, you know, rehearing this now, but I just am not sure how to move forward with it. And then, you know, if things are in violation, how it would be addressed. So unfortunately, we cannot be in support for it. We don't know you guys personally. We've only really talked to you guys twice. But we do apologize. It's just unfortunately, the way our property is, it's just, it just doesn't work for us, so.
So, quick question. So based on that last exchange, it doesn't sound like you've addressed the issues directly with the owners of the back where you want the gravel?
Nope, we haven't talked to them. So they've never talked to us either. So we, as far as like they're in store stuff up. But they came to our front door once and asked us if we were okay with the recreation of vehicles. He said no. And then I talked to the neighbor one other time when they were taking down the fence to ask them what his plan was with the fence. And that's when I said, okay, we might try to pursue. Because he said that he was gonna re-put up the existing fence on the lower portion directly on the property line, which would have given us basically no coverage. So that's why I said that we are gonna seek a taller fence, which I told him. But that's the only time we've ever talked to them.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
And Josh, can I ask you a question? How do we enforce it? The other day, we have no information until someone tells us, right? So it needs to come back through, you know, the town, for us to be able to.
Yeah, I think our, what I was saying, your point is that it shouldn't be on us to make the neighbor comply with.
No, but it is on you to let us know any information.
Yeah, which we, yeah, which we definitely get. I think the other thing too, just to kind of close this out, is to kind of really take a look at these pictures and ask yourself if this is something you would want to look at day in and day out for months and months and months. Ask yourself how you'd be able to enjoy your property, how you potentially be able to sell your property if you were going to put on the market. So I just think there's a lot to consider. So I appreciate your time and everything.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I respond today?
I'll let you respond after all the, all the.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Kim Jenkins of Olga Hazora. We live at 545 Elbow Circle. And we are directly behind the portion of this property that has a vast penis, I would say, of things going on. So the property, always owned the property since 1998. And when she bought it, it was a premium lot because right behind her was all woods. There was nothing else there. So at that time, it was premium. And now our property value, we both sell there with it for a living. So the property value is diminished immensely because of what now we have to look at on the property. And it is absolutely untrue that all of those things are only held during the daytime. They are there all night long. But obviously, we can't take a picture at night because it's not gonna show up. But it is absolutely not true that they are technically available. And we have the original notes from the public hearing for the special use permit. We're asking tonight that that be revoked because it is really a difficult situation for us to do it. We, Olga has had contact with the neighbor in terms of like, for instance, a tree that was on his property fell and caused a $40,000 insurance claim against the property. And she asked him to do something about it. He did absolutely nothing. There was another tree that fell a few months prior to that onto the property. She asked him to move that. He said he would. We never did. We had to cut it up. And we had a text message to him and all of that. But just literally today, the bobcat is not actually pushed into the shed like it should be. It's out from, even today, as he sits here, it's not where it's supposed to be. There, in the original permit, it says that there can be no outstanding violations in order for this to be here and that the occupancy is operated in such a manner that it does not disturb surrounding residential community. And all of the business that goes on here disturbs completely the residential community. The people that live up on gravel road that struggle to support, it, this property looks nice to gravel road. It really does. And those are the neighbors that are here speaking. It's those of us who are behind that are the most impacted by all of this that are here asking us to do it. Yeah, we did bring, I mean, there's, there's videos of him operating equipment early in the morning, 6:00, 6:00, 9:00 AM.
So, so is, do you have a lot of YouTube videos?
They're all short. Like I'm sure to keep them. They're not, I mean, as long, they're all.
Okay, as I was gonna say, if you can pick one or two that are most representative.
Do you know which they are recently?
Um, let me make the, we don't need to vary them. But the, oh, the, started before 7:30 in the morning hours.
Yeah.
It's a rise to wake up to.
Yeah.
I wish this was.
There's one from 6:00 AM. Oh, the first one? Okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah, the early morning ones, those are, yeah. So the first one.
I mean, there's, there's a good one of like the dump truck thing, you know, it's signed in on that. That is a good one. So I assume this is not, you know, something that's supposed to be allowed as storing of the vehicles. And from what I understand, it was supposed to be only drawing them in and out and parking in, in the, in the structure, which obviously is not what's happening. And this is the newest element that we've here all the time, not to mention these reviews. It's impossible to clean the outside of the house clean. The window has all the debris. And, you know, I tried to open the window and enjoy the light that I have planted. Instead, all it smells is diesel fuel and all the.
And in addition, in the original paperwork here, it says no business activities are conducted on site with the exception of office opening. So literally only things inside of the house are supposed to be conducted for business. And it's clear that he's operating the business outside.
And also, like, all, all, all the debris that he is bringing from these jobs is getting here. And in, uh, first, um, that, that's from Alexis's video. Uh, in, in the pictures, you'll be able to see all the degrees that now, especially as the rains have come through the, uh, the spring, just how much washout happened and all the asphalt and all the debris and all the debris that got.
Yeah, it's hard pack, so it doesn't absorb any of the water. So everything is coming into, into our yard. You'll see in some of the pictures what's happened to now our yard because of how that's been built and broken.
So that's, that's pretty new, blocking the rain now. It, it, you can just, let's go through, Josh, and, like, you know, like, this is obviously got brought from another job because that's like, I don't know, like, oh, I'm, it's an outpost or something like that. You know, all of that. And, you know, like, I'm sure if the neighbors from Gravel Road had to look at that all day long, they probably have different opinion.
They do, I guess.
Not this part of it.
Not the Gravel Road neighbors.
Nobody else has, we are in a, we have been lied by all of this.
So, you know, all, all these, uh, vehicles have been stored and knowing that they're violation and they had not been used until three days before the course begins. So that's, that said there for a moment, so we cannot pretend that we don't know what those are.
It is still, like, there's still three, three trailers on the property today and a lot of these.
That's a great, I was waiting, but.
There's a small gray trailer, there's a big white trailer, there's a flatbed trailer in front of the barn. And then there's a.
Great, please. Um, so obviously, you know, he's doing work. And with the, the great issue that now is becoming, like, um, uh, Ms. Polo was over there earlier and she literally stands on my property and, and, uh, the great, uh, um, neighbor's property is almost over high.
When the property was purchased, everything was leveled from, from our property to his property. And since then, now it's all his property is built up.
So unfortunately, that is a different.
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand. But it all, but it all goes to that he's bringing this building from other jobs, putting it on the property and then pushing it out. That still, that still is.
Do you know if this bill is being used, is complied with what the permit allows?
It's not because it has the per pack in it. There's not, we have that here.
If you can scroll a little bit more, you can see, like, asphalt under it that is buried. I mean, we can just go quickly, like, that is okay. Oh, there, there you go. That's, that's, that's the current drainage situation with what was created. And after that, we see it for weeks. It's still sad and, and all the green algae grew. Um, oh, there, well, there you go. Um, and basically there, it's a doming by time. I mean, I know he created a little bit and ran the situation a little bit, but it's still, like, I haven't been able to get on there the entire season so far because it's so bad. Okay, move this. Uh, that's a good representation, I think. How would they, uh? And I, like, if you keep scrolling, Josh, like, I, I think, I wanna show, um, one particular picture. Once it, uh, once, uh, rain washed out, where you can see that asphalt has been buried, you know, under the ground that the key piles on. So, you know, you can see, like, the dump, he just brings dump trucks and dump trucks, so it's just, like, dumps in there. Um, again, those. And, you know, we don't care if everybody is more fancy, you know.
Yeah, you do, yeah, those things stop, that are sort of property.
Oh, that's the one, there you go. That, that's the one I was looking for. So as you can see, like, this from my angle is that once the rain, um, washed out, that underneath, although a couple is absorbered there, underneath is asphalt. So you can see that everything that's in that multiple feet of field that he put in there, it, it's all the job.
It's the great from his job.
Hey, okay. I mean, that, that's a different presentation. And that's all the issues that we've come down with. Please.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, please.
Thank you. Any other, um, uh, public, uh, comments? Anybody else? Uh, sorry, the, uh, property board and the presentation, can you come back up?
Trees falling down is part of what we made. Air streams rad, bunks too rad, okay?
So, okay, I'll, I'll just jump in real quick. There, there's clearly components of a business that, uh, from what I'm seeing and from what I've seen to the property that is not in compliance with what the, uh, with this, with this board had provided, you know, was it ten plus years ago? Um, and then there's, there's something that is of mother nature, right? I mean, absolutely. So, so there's, and I'm, I'm trying to separate the two. And at the end of the day, we have five components of storage of materials, storage of equipment. Um, and work happening on property for the business, not for the property. So there's components that is happening on this property that is in violation of, um, the variance that was provided, uh, with the guidance that was provided at that time. So I, I guess, not, I don't wanna talk about the trees. I don't wanna talk about the fill. That is, that's a different application. I do wanna talk about the storage.
The, the trailers, recreational trailers are a separate issue, okay? The, um, the trees are a separate issue, okay? And, and, uh, citation for the three trailers was February twenty-sixth of this year, not September. I got the letter right here from the town. Okay?
And that next day, they were moved where they belong.
And, and they're, and they're, you're allowed three trailers. You're allowed three trailers. Four RV materials, one in front, one on the side, and one in back. I, I can give you the code number if you'd like it. Okay? So he chose to originally put them in back because he thought it was nice and neat. Why have, uh, snowmobile trailer out front, his, uh, camper on the side, and then his motorcar trailer in back? It doesn't seem to make logical sense. From the neighbor's point, I can see the point of view. They don't wanna look at, all, all three of them stacked up nice and neat. So we're not, we're not claiming that, that Tim has not made errors, okay? We're not claiming that at all. All that we're claiming is that every time he has been cited, he's taken definitive, quick action to modify the situation, get his equipment undercover, et cetera, et cetera. And he's not, it's not like he can't use his Bobcat on his own property to be ready.
I don't have material of the property for resale. Everything on the property is for my son.
It, it's, it's not. So, so sorry, when you loading a dump truck.
Getting rid of the stone pile that everyone's complaining about. We made it go away.
That you, that you just said that you were gonna be using on the property. So, I mean, I, I wanna understand. I'm watching a video of you loading a dump truck of stone that is stored on your property and, so.
Yeah, we, we made the stone, we made the stone pile go away. That was before.
Well, stone pile is still there as of today.
It is. There is another stone pile, brand new stone pile. Cause Pat Stevens came over. I need a two-to-one slope. Behind the barn, where there's trees coming down tomorrow, needs to be restored. I got a stone delivery today that's gonna get graded out once the trees are done. Pat, correct? You came over, took a look at everything? Everything was okay? Did you wanna say something?
We're continuing to work on the fill permit.
I'm sorry, what's that?
We're continuing to work with him on the compliance of fill permit.
I need you to come up to, to the microphone for a second.
You wanna know about the fill permit? You said you did it. But, okay.
It's a separate issue, so.
Yeah, that, that's what he.
Okay.
So I mean, I used my equipment on my property and that was stipulated when I got the permit that because I have equipment, I'm allowed to use it on my property. The kids build dirt bike jumps all the time. They ride their electric dirt bikes around in the backyard. They ride their little pit bikes around in the backyard. I mean, they're not stuck in the house all day. They're kids. So, I'm sorry, we use the property for recreation, but. I don't want my kids stuck in the house all day.
I, I don't know if anybody here was talking about, um, the use of pit bikes and whatnot.
Well, they used to, I get, build jumps and stuff like that.
Josh and Jim, I don't know if you guys can answer this, um, because of how long ago this was. The storage of commercial vehicles to be stored, um, inside, um, was the building that's out there, does that, did that meet the requirements or the, what was presented to the board at that point? Or, I don't know, you were on the board at that point as well?
Yeah, building was actually added, the, there's the, the original barn and then there's, um, another section that goes to, um, up to the back of it. It was added at the insistence of the zoning board. Some of the equipment could be stored inside the building and not in use as opposed to being out the open.
The reason I'm asking is, um, that, that portion, um, is a pre-sight.
Yes.
Is not a four-story.
Correct. And it was approved by the planning board.
Correct.
Um, the applicants had actually asked for a larger footprint so that more could be stored inside. And the size was reduced, um, again, with the request of the planning board, but I have to look at it then again. Um, but it was reduced from what was originally requested to satisfy someone. But that was the condition, was that the equipment be stored in the barn and not in use. Some places in the minutes, and I couldn't, I can't find it right now. I'm sure that I can, if I read it more thoroughly. The homeowner could use the equipment in their own yard for their own maintenance. But the employees could not be on the premises working on the equipment. Um, anything else?
So is that a little scram?
If I may. I do wanna understand that the question was, is the building. Not, not per the building code, but per what was presented to this board at that point.
The board had been, in, in, one situation was the completion of construction was occurred by June twelve, two thousand twelve. Um, I'd like to just point out to the board that the building permit is still over and active, or it's actually expired now. There, it never was closed out. The building department also reached out in two thousand twenty-one to notify them and never was in reply to the response.
Chris from the building department stopped over and gave the final approval on the part.
Do you have that? In writing?
Cause from two thousand twelve, I could probably find it, yeah. Absolutely.
Also, if you can get that, I would, I would appreciate that.
Also, when the, when the special use permit was granted, we had nine employees, chip trucks, chippers, stump grinders. It's me and my son. That's it. Got a dump truck, a Bobcat, and an excavator. That's it. All I have. So we've downsized quite a bit.
So then, I'm gonna ask a question. At the time, they had nine employees and all that equipment. The intent was all that equipment would be stored inside.
Correct. And for.
Looking at the, again, I'm looking at the photos and I've been out to the site over the last two, you know, month or so. Um, every time I pass it, there's been equipment outside. So now that you've downsized, everything can be stored inside, but it's not, I guess, so why is it not?
It is. And if you go over there right now, it's inside. Everything is in the front and stuffed in the barn. I mean, we could take a ride over there right now if you wanted to see it.
Not the recreational trailers?
Yeah, the recreational. Well, there is one snowmobile trailer in there because I didn't want it outside because we're allowed three. So we can stuff one in there.
So just to toss a possible, uh, uh, solution out besides Tim trying to be more diligent. How about if he proposes putting a berm along, uh, on his property where the two neighbors are planting some, uh, trees for screening? And work harder complying with his, uh, special use permit?
Can you say something to that?
The public, the public session is closed unfortunately. Um, I guess, I have a, I have a couple of concerns, right? I mean, and I, and I appreciate you offering that. You know, I, I look at myself, if I was in an R-three district, um, and you have some great neighbors. They're very happy with you. Uh, they came here to speak, right? I mean, that takes a lot for somebody to take time out of their, their, uh, Tuesday to come out, uh, to support the neighbor. So you obviously, um, made good with, with some of the neighbors, right? Um, you are in an R-three district. You haven't made good with all your neighbors, obviously. Again, on the flip side, you have a couple of neighbors here that are speaking against it. Um, you know, there was a special use permit. Um, as, you know, at your own admission, there's been things that you have not complied with. And every time that it has been brought to your attention, you complied with, but then all of a sudden it sounds, looks and appears to lapse again, right? So we shouldn't be having this conversation.
I agree.
That you are not in compliance. You should just be in compliance. So to have, have you offered something to make amends, I appreciate it. But on the flip side, we've been, it's been ten years and I don't know how many times there have been violations or whatnot. But there's been what appears to be a rear card. Um, so I don't know.
We've never been, had a letter or anything other than this year. We've never.
All the complaints have been in the last twelve months. Or, or any citations.
Complaint event.
Right. So.
And everything has been complied with in the last ten months. And that neighbor right there looks directly at my barn and he'll tell you every night, my equipment is in there nice and neat. Every night since Jim has given us a letter.
So, so the permit's been in effect twenty-two years. And there's no documented complaints or citations except in the last ten or twelve months. So either he's done a pretty good job for twenty-one out of twenty-two years or he's.
Or he has two neighbors and it's.
Well, right, right.
There's a plethora of reasons, right? At the end of the day, you're still in a R-three district. There are still, um, components that you need, need to comply with.
Right.
You know, you're saying that the equipment is stored in there at night. That was not part of the conditions. The conditions were in that barn, right? If you're driving home for lunch, I don't think anybody here is going to make a boo about it. But at the end of the day, that equipment, and I look at all these photos that you sent through as well. There was more than just at night that they were stored there. That, I mean, we're taking, the pictures were taken during the day and throughout, right? So I, I'm, I'm seeing one thing, I'm hearing something, is what it comes down to.
So pictures can be deceiving. It's a half a second shot, okay? And it, like, if pictures in the morning, the equipment's coming out of the, uh, barn per se, I mean, it needs to be loaded on the trailer, maybe move one piece come off the trailer, the other piece go on. Okay, I'm not seeing molten stone in the day of the dump truck. So the, there's, the photos and videos can be deceiving. I didn't see any date on any, any of the videos, but the point that I'm making is that if there hasn't been any issues in twenty-one years to revoke his permit because he's had only.
You don't get, you don't get a free bat because even if you have twenty great years and then you have one, one year where. You don't get, you don't get a free pass because even if you have 20 great years and then you have one, one year where there are what appear to be by the photos.
Yeah.
Some legitimate concerns about some of your neighbors.
Correct.
Obviously, you have a great relationship with a, with a vast majority of them. But the people that have presented evidence, as it is a snapshot.
Correct.
Show a different story.
Correct.
So just because even if you were in perfect compliance those 20 years, doesn't give you a free pass to, even the past year to say, well, look at my first one, it's different now.
It also doesn't indicate that the special use permit should be revoked because.
I don't know, it doesn't.
Correct. Correct. Okay.
But the, their silence shouldn't necessarily be the, the, uh, construed as their, thinking you've done a great job. Sometimes I need to get to a certain point before you let.
I get it.
So just to say that they haven't said anything until the past year doesn't mean they haven't been affected or concerned about it. It's just sometimes, just to be a decent neighbor, you say, okay, we let him go this far, this far, this far. And so finally you say, I can't do this anymore. So the history of it, whether it's been five years, 20 years, whatever, I think it very little do admit it's what's happening now, which is why you're here.
Seriously, I do think the, the history of no complaints is a lot to do with.
But, but why, we also look at the photos, history has changed. The property has changed over the course of the time as well, right? We ain't done. Then there was vegetation. That's right.
The whole back end was all ash trees. They all died.
Yep.
I'm sorry, it sucks.
No, but, but.
And I don't want it like that.
But to your, to your point.
Yep.
At the end of the day, the last 12 months, the last 12 months is probably like the majority of a lot of this has occurred, right? So, so I get it. Prior, you didn't have a fill permit, so you weren't filling. Prior, you had vegetation.
We did have a fill permit from 2015 when we allowed the town to come through our yard with a drainage project to help out the private drive next to us. They tied into the catch basin in her yard and brought a pipe through our property, which I told them, go ahead. I didn't give them permits because I didn't want to have to deal with the 15 feet with the variance. So I just said, yeah, go ahead. So they brought a catch basin over and did a complete drainage project on the private drive because the shant track flooded down. When they did that, I got a fill permit because I was doing some great. But COVID happened, all the ash trees died, took them all down.
My, my point to it is a lot has changed on the property over the years, right? So the, the point of there hasn't been complaints, the property has changed, right? It is, is a big component of this.
Correct.
She, she has complained previously.
Thank you.
Certainly, I apologize.
So the.
But it's actually correct.
Understood.
So, so, so given that, that it has occurred, that's why we offered to fence, screen, plant trees and, you know, get, get more cover and, and try and harder to make sure that we're 100% compliant.
Other comments from the board?
Josh or Jim, I know we've changed systems a lot of times. Do you have, from when this permit was issued 12 years ago, do you have a file of complaints that have been received? Or I don't know how any of it works. I'm sorry.
Moved over to a new system. Moved over to a new system in the last couple of years and only one that I have, gosh, this is from 2015. It was locked by the previous board.
Okay.
That's when the sewer went in.
It's, I, I don't know that it was when the sewer went in. I just know that it's a long.
Mr. Stevens actually gave me the data sort of project that I didn't have that.
To try to kind of bring this conversation towards a conclusion here, I just reminded the board the standard review here. Direct your attention to section 351, 3, section F, subsection 1. Purpose of this hearing is to determine whether there's been a material violation in terms of any one of the terms, conditions, or requirements imposed by set of permit. Obviously, it's a bit of a vague standard as to whether it's material non-compliance. That's what the board can determine. By what note, the board can decide whether to revoke the special use permit or alternatively impose any further conditions that they see fit in ensuring future compliance.
So I, I guess I'll just, I'll throw out there to the board, you know, there's a lot of different things happening on the property. Obviously, some, some neighbors are happy with, with this particular property and others are not. There's a lot of different components. I, I agree, a tree falling is, is a tree fall. I'm not gonna, could it be from fill to maybe their ash, maybe a lot of them were ash trees and the ash floor got to a lot of my trees as well. So I mean, trees unfortunately do die, especially when there are ashes in our. You know, by, by what I heard was evidence of, you know, some violations of, of, of the, the requirements that were imposed upon us. Me personally, I, you know, I witnessed equipment out there over the last month or so, not out there on a regular basis. I guess I look, look to, again, it's an R3 residential neighborhood. I personally would not be happy with some of the photos in my backyard. So I, I can definitely feel for some of the neighbors. I went to the private drive on the other side and it, it's, it's night and day, to be honest, from, from at least what I saw. One side is landscape and, you know, law and, you know, berm and our varieties and the other side is not. So there's definitely, there's definitely been a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts on this. I'm, I definitely see that there have been violations within. You know, and one of the other comments of when there's been violations, it's been resolved. But, you know, I can see the limestone, there's still pile of stone out there. I just, to be frank, I don't believe, you know, this is really what it comes down to. That's what I'm sure.
Well, and there are a lot of moving parts right now because we've still got the fill permit. I know that Pat Stevens has been out looking at the impact on the drainage and keeping an eye on the fill. And it, filling it in to, to even it out. There's, between the private drive and Galbrae, the private drive and that side of gravel are at one level. And then that whole neighborhood of Galbrae is probably two to three feet lower the entire neighborhood. So anything that happens on the parcel is exacerbated by the change in topography between the two neighborhoods. And I don't, I don't know that there's anything, I don't know what results that it's. And I know Pat's keeping an eye on it and I'm gonna stay in my lane and let him, let him manage that. But is, is part of the situation there now because of you have to take the trees down and then put in the gravel to remediate and then you can do a 21 slope to make the side better. But what, how can you hide it? The berm obviously would, excuse me, work in some trees. You're not going to plant anything along the property line because it's low and wet and nothing will grow there. Except, well, swamp roses, but those aren't actually going to hide anything. And, and would I want to look at it? No. But if it were buffered, I, I don't know because there's just so much going on with them right now.
Well, also if buffered, it's not, it's gonna be.
No, it, it, it's taking a lot to grow and.
Before, even if you plant good sized, you know, shrub or annual trees, it's still not going to be a real effect. So.
And a fence would help?
A fence will help, but like you said, there's a great difference.
Well, and I don't think the fence is going to be on the line. I think the fence is going to be at the peak of the elevation.
Right, on my property, not on, not on the, the lower side of the inside, but, but even then. Because, I mean, I feel for, for someone that, if they buy something, especially when you buy your house, it's a beautiful tree block behind you. You think, this is great. But you have no say, you have no guarantee that it's ever going to stay there.
That's right. You have no control over the order.
So it's one of those things, they can clear cut it or it can burn down or whatever. So in that respect, there's no guarantee in life. And especially, they were all ashes and they all just died because of the annual ash floor. That's, you know, you really, they can't be responsible for an act of God.
Okay, that's why, you know, going back to, this is really about the whole occupation, right?
Right. But plain and simple, because, but it's not plain and simple because it has all these other active parts that are all affected. If it was just a, just a competition, you would have probably put a vote to it, have not worked. There's just too many things, I think, that although they are separate, I think are difficult to separate from the overall action. Generally, we have to, but I think it's, for me, it's difficult to separate one from the other.
But it sounds like to me is the board is trying to find ways to mitigate the effect of the non-compliance, right? And really what the hearing is about is determining whether it was material non-compliance with the use permit. So that is a threshold level question. So does it refine material non-compliance? If yes, then the options are to either revoke the permit or impose other conditions to ensure compliance and perhaps other efforts to mitigate any additional impact.
Thank you.
So I, I mean, I'll answer that question for myself. Yes, I find, I find.
I agree.
Material non-compliance, right, is.
I've been out there, I've been out there three times and like you said, it could just be his bad luck that every time he went out there, there had been vehicles.
Right.
And it's not like that.
Commercial vehicles, not just.
No, no, okay, not, not, but a pair of the commercial vehicles. I didn't look at the license plate, but it was a dump. There's a, I think it was a bobcat or some sort of shit.
Right.
I couldn't tell through the, through the brush, but it was at different times of the day. So it's not like they came at the same time every day and it was the same situation. So I believe it is. There is some based on the level threshold that you presented. I, I agree with you on that, with the risks.
Right.
But he obviously has worked with a number of neighbors to make everyone with them. Maybe so, the condition could, could be that he has to work with them.
Yeah, so let me, let, let's answer the question first. I mean, so I, I don't know, I want to know if the board members, how they feel? If they find a material non-compliance or not, I guess I'm, I'm asking the rest of the board.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know, I think we could maybe, there is obviously some non-compliance. There's no doubt that might be some non-compliance.
And that's all I, that's all I want to, I just want to start with that first because if we find that there's non-compliance, then, then there's two options. Is finding an alternative solution or revoking. So what I'm hearing, Corinne, I don't know if you're in agreement or not.
It's, I've been in and around the property several times and yet times there have been non-compliance as visible. The conditions as to why I can't, I can't speak to.
Yep. So, so with that, I guess, let's move the, the conversation then on to what do we do moving forward, right? I mean, two options. We find a solution that satisfies the neighbors, that imposes additional conditions, or do we revoke? I'm not going to speak for the other neighbors. I don't know if there is any conditions. I like the, the option that we've thrown out, but I'm not the one living there, to be honest, right? What it comes down to.
Can we speak to it since we got the neighbors or not?
Not yet.
Again, if I would have to, what was, what was our efforts to mitigate the visual impact on the neighbors? Would they, I would suggest that the board, considering we are going to not revoke, like impose conditions, that there should be conditions to ensure compliance via working with the code enforcement officer on a periodic basis, reporting back to this board on a periodic basis so that the board can ensure actual compliance.
I appreciate that. And that, that goes back to, and Josh, I don't know if, we had asked that this come back to the board six months after this grant. And I don't know, I don't think we have record of one way or the other.
Yep, we weren't able to find any record of it coming back at that six months.
Okay. So I, I guess, I appreciate that definitely, you know, making sure it stays a little compliance.
I'll look too, because I think we do have record of coming back. I think.
If you did that, that would be great. Again, the town has switched systems and.
Yeah.
Things may, may not have.
I mean, you're talking 22 years ago, so.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, because we, you have the evidence from the number, it was tabled, it went to December. It was under the conditions. It went to the planning board to approve the barn. They had to come back to the zoning board because of the size. And then we don't have that documentation and I, I don't, I can't remember what I did yesterday. I can't tell you. Yeah, that was 12 years ago.
12 years ago.
But it, it seems like maybe it would be there, but I don't know that that will give us any information that.
It won't, right.
Helps us.
Self-assured.
And if we do impose additional conditions, I think we need to be painfully, wordily specific with. Because, because going, going back and looking at them now, at the time, they seemed very clear cut. But we weren't specific as to why did they put, we have to be back in the barn and when is it okay to get it out?
Correct.
You know, so, so we.
I thought the stipulation was for at night and that's, that was totally my misunderstanding.
You listed hours of operation, but.
Yeah.
And we just, we had.
Storage for parking of the vehicles, right? So it, it doesn't stipulate. From my standpoint, it is all the time unless it is leaving the property.
Right. So when we're unloading and loading and stuff like that, I mean.
If you're loading to leave or unloading to park.
It gets other stuff in and out.
That's a different conversation, but yeah, it, it's not hard.
I didn't, I didn't realize that. I, I thought, I thought the way I got everything stacked, the bobcats out front. I pull it around the corner, we go to work, we come home, we put everything back, we put the bobcat back in. I didn't think that was an issue.
So.
One of the stipulations in the original permit already says that it's supposed to be stacking tents or containers in between all the neighbors. That never happened.
Understood.
If we give it to them again, he wants to say he's not going to do it.
The stacking bench was there all along.
Not in front of our property at all, ever.
Please, I mean, we're getting to 10 o'clock now and.
We don't want to go.
This one, yeah.
Me too.
We do. So I, I'm looking to the board, you know, I, from, from my standpoint, I, I'll be frank, I'm, I'm struggling myself. I can come up with a number of additional conditions. I personally have not interacted with you other than here.
Yeah.
So, you know, all I, all I know is what I see with my eyes. And then what I'm hearing, it kind of contradicts. So I'm glad you have a, what appears to be a thriving business. I think that's great. You are, I can go back to, you are in R3 district. You have a special use permit. The intent of a special use permit is to make sure you don't piss off your neighbors, right? And right now.
The person.
You have, right? So where do we go from here? You know, I'm not your neighbor. I can come up with things that would make me happy. I'm not your neighbor. I guess, you know, the arborvitae is as great, as Chris mentioned, they are not going to grow in day one. A 10-foot fence would be phenomenal with. A 10-foot fence would be phenomenal with the arborvitae's. That's not gonna stop the noise. You know, it also doesn't relieve you of the requirements of the initial. Position of the board, right? So I guess, for me, I'm, I'm hopefully, it's a revocation unless we can come up with another solution. And I'm open to it, but I need to hear, I need to hear from everybody else.
I believe that way, but I think because of the number of neighbors that don't have an issue with it, which again, they're in different position, I mean, different locations throughout the site versus looking at the backend of it, of the, the ones that have complained about it. But still, like you said, my, my issue is that I've been out there a number of times and it's always a violation. And the fact that it says, well, every time I've been told, he takes care of it. But then it appears, since they're not new violations or repeated the old ones, that he isn't as on top of the permit requirements as he probably should. Now, whether that's intentional or just, that's just the way we work as super beings. I don't know, I don't think it's, I don't think it's anything nefarious. But I, I don't see how, anything, any stipulations we could put on are going to rectify the situation for the neighbors on Galbraeau. Because like I said, a fence could block it. A fence with vegetation can make it a little more aesthetic pleasing. That's not gonna change the noise or potentially any issues from other things that are going on in the site. So for that reason, I would agree with you. Well, if I said, yeah, you're, I'm leaning toward revocation as well. Unless the neighbors themselves that are, have issues with it, said, they'll be okay with that.
Sure.
Which I would have, even if they'd stayed this long. I want to look at it because it's.
Other board members? I'm taking it away. Give them time to clean the stuff up and come back and apply again. And be monitored by the code enforcement.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of leaning with most of the people I think, videos of diversification. I really don't see anything that would mediate the problems that are on Galbraeau. Nothing that's gonna be easy and effective.
Right.
If he was to comply with the stipulation, I would agree with you. With the hours of operation and the stuff, the way, things like that. Make it clean up or I'll go a little bit. I don't think there'd be as much of an issue as there is right now.
Wouldn't be his time there if he revoked this evening or he could apply again. Since it's, it's a revocation of an existing one. Is there a move in?
I don't believe there's a mandatory one on reapplication for a special use permit.
I'm not aware of any.
So let's say he.
Something tomorrow.
Right, what I'm saying, if we revoked it this evening, just theoretically, and he worked with his neighbors and cleaned up, it got to the point where they supported it and he reapplied, in theory, it could be next week, right? Or to, to code. So we're not keeping him from rectifying the situation, we're just going to jump to the.
Well, you're, I mean, small business, we are asking him to find a different place to park all his vehicles, all his commercial vehicles, right?
Can, if we revoke it, I don't know if we give him the opportunity. Is it revoked as of midnight tonight or this evening, three days or?
You would typically apply a period of time.
Like in two months to find other places for his vehicles.
So what if we tabled it and we cleaned up?
I think, I think we're beyond that, unfortunately. Just a thought. Appreciate it. Corinne, do you, you thinking?
I'm, I'm torn on this. No matter what is done at the property, the noise, noise isn't, noise isn't gonna be mitigated by a bomb or by plantings. And, and even if it's early in the morning, it just landed on you, nothing in the middle. There's no way to cancel out the noise of diesel trucks or backup alarms and Bobcats. And, and I've lived it. We had a similar situation.
However.
With the neighbors, so I don't.
However, if I'm, I'm looking at my photos correctly, if they're parked in the three-sided barn.
And leaving out directly.
And leaving out directly, not parked behind the barn. A lot of that noise would be mitigated by the barn being pulled into, onto a trail. I mean, you're, you're not going to eliminate completely, to your point, but it ends up being mitigated.
And, and in theory, the way the property is laid out or the doors on that building, if they're truly in the barn, the neighbors at 949 and 951 would be the ones that would be.
Most impacted.
Most impacted by it. And they're not, so. No, no, there is a small berm there, there is some arborvitae, but those arborvitae are not blocking anything at this point in time. They're.
They're fairly new.
They're fairly new and young and. I don't, I don't know the right answer.
The vote here is the code enforcement. If the board is going to consider. Some short of revocation, then I think, I would suggest, again, that there has to be some sort of schedule similar to what was the original permit, probably on a more frequent basis, to ensure compliance with the actual, again, not mitigation, but actual compliance with the terms of special code enforcement officer coming on to the property for annual inspections. It happened every so often, so that's kind of the comeback. And we had the board's discussion more often if there's been ten non-compliance, including some of the other things that have built in on the property that was the reason we cleaned up. If the town looks, if the board was inclined to do so. But that's if you're seeking alternative short of revocation.
Corinne, I think I'm telling the same thing, right? Revocation feels, feels to be right, but I also have one other.
Just a touch severe. Just, just, just a smidge. Because I agree with you that, I mean, I think, I might speak very well, but I think we all kind of feel the same way. And that, that seems to be the course of tape, but, you know. Only because, like I said, his neighbors, you don't defend something like that if it just got hit a lot. You don't, you don't spend three hours here speaking up for him and saying that I'm okay with it. However, he also can't ignore the people that have come out of the opposition court and that have presented evidence that honestly, I think we've all seen as well.
Yes.
So that's, that's the part where I'm, that, that I'm torn. Well, like I said, I think if we were to revest it, at least he knows what he needs to do. And that if he fixes the situation and feels that he's, he's made a good effort, he can reapply it. You know, and there's, it's not like he has to wait six months or a year. He can do it if he meets the, the neighbors that have issues with him and says, okay, what can I do to try and make this tolerable? Because it's never gonna be like it was before. Then then he reapplies. And whether that happens next week, next month, or whatever. But he's got an, he's got an opportunity. Because that's, to me, if he could apply for another year or so, I think, I'd be even less mortifying for, for keeping him from doing what he needs to do.
I appreciate that, that's a person. All right, so this doesn't.
No, it's a, depending on the board's interpretation, just want to make sure she highlights the scenario. Do you know your section?
Where is this section? We're out. I'm gonna try this by messing up, please, something correcting. Regarding 941 Gravel Road Special Use Permit, Major Home Occupation Review, located at 941 Gravel Road, Town Webster Zoning Board Appeals has reviewed the major home occupation. And has found the home occupation is a violation of material failure of compliance with, with. Eliminating outside storage or parking, parking of the commercial vehicles, which includes a Bobcat and a Chipper, with, with construction, outdoor, outdoor storage of the commercial vehicles. I'm just the court on here, what number is that? Is it general? Is it general? Oh, okay, thank you.
Without terms of.
Yeah, with all terms. Thank you.
What is the new section?
No, yes, 350-37.
350-37?
A2G. It's the one that has been cited by code enforcement.
I'm gonna start over. This, the Town of Webster's Zoning Board Appeals has reviewed the special use permit at 941 Gravel Road. And has found the applicant has violated, in terms of had material failure of compliance with outside storage, parking of commercial vehicles, as well as materials as identified in section 350-37-A2G. This board is, I guess, we can motion to revoke the special use permit or set home occupation.
Can we give him what then he needs to comply with?
You can, with that, period?
Yeah. I was gonna say sixty days.
Yeah, I think at least sixty, because that's fair because you need to potentially find other places to do stuff and I think sixty, it also allows him to, if he feels it's worth it, to try and work out any issues with the neighbors.
Yep, absolutely. Is there any other, I guess, physical conditions on a revocation? So sixty days of compliance to provide other means of, or his home occupation. Three days, uh, six days to cease the home occupation.
I second.
Okay, Mr. Shore.
Aye.
Mr. Santola.
Aye.
Mrs. Vola.
Aye.
Mr. Lydner.
Aye.
Mr. Fenn.
Aye.
All right, unfortunately, we have revoked the special use permit for the home occupation. There's been a lot of discussion here. We, I strongly recommend you get with your neighbors to see if the vote can, if a resolution can occur. Because I hope to see you back here for, for it again, to go over the reservation as well.
Yeah, thanks, Corinne.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So. He's leaving, so, yeah, okay. But.
What did you think?
There was a survey map that did not have full information on 941 Gravel Road parking of recreational vehicles. I do recommend that we table that till the next meeting. At which time, hopefully, they can give us more accurate information. So I make a motion to table the 941 Gravel Road parking of recreational vehicles.
Second.
Call this in paper?
Aye.
Aye.